Good evening, everyone.
Good evening, everyone.
I'd like to welcome our members of the public to this evening's meeting of the City Council. I will ask my chaplain to open the meeting.
I decided I was definitely not going to speak about the election tonight, so... Indeed, I felt like I wouldn't do that. Growing up in Northern Ireland, I learnt that vicars shouldn't interfere in politics, so I'm not getting involved. What I did think about was might have some bearing, but it's the choice sometimes I think we make between fear and love. Now, of course, lots of people don't choose to live in fear, do they? So I was watching a TV programme yesterday about those who are in fear of IS, you know, and have fled their homes. And of course, we had in with the anniversary of the liberation of Herbert Belton yesterday. And obviously, to be in fear of the Nazis as a Jewish person or as a gay person is entirely reasonable. So I'm not suggesting that everybody who lives in fear isn't reasonable. But I do think that sometimes fear can bind us. And I think also that when we are trying to persuade people of our own views, and vicars are not exempt from this, by the way, we can use fear as a kind of a way to help people decide for us. And we may see, just a touch on persuasion and persuading people things, we may see some tactics like that in our country at the minute, where fear is appealed to, people's fear. We choose to use that side of ourselves and we choose to use that to influence others. And for me, fear closes things down. If you live in fear, you live a very closed-down life. I often visit people who have just been recently bereaved, and they say, 'Oh, there's so much death around', because all they can see is the death and the fear around them because they're in a dark place. And I think people living in fear, often, they're trapped. I think when we choose to live in love, love is an open thing, but a very much fundamentally more vulnerable place to live. Who put it well was, of course, Paul of Tarsus, you'd expect me to say that, but when he said of the challenge of living in love, when he talked to people who were very unloving and living with lots of fear, he currently said, 'Love is patient, love is kind, and particularly challenging, love bears no records of wrongs.' To choose to live in love is to choose to leave the past and all the fear or dread or despair that that might lead us into, and actually to set aside those things and to choose to live an open and vulnerable life where we embrace others around us. And I think fundamentally, I hope that I choose to live in love, and I hope that our country, that's a choice that we will all be making, whatever that means we vote for, that the choice will be love for the other and love for ourselves and our country.
Please can I remind councillors to use their microphones at all times? If the public are having difficulty hearing a discussion, please raise your hand or alert an officer. We're not expecting far allowances, but far 86 are located at the back and front of the council chamber. For wheelchair users and those with mobility issues, please make your way to safe waiting area beneath the stairwell. The council officers will be on hand to assist where required. An accessible U6 toilet is located outside the council chamber, opposite the men's room. A drinks machine is located opposite committee room one. Can I have a brief of minutes of the meetings of the council held on 26th of February 2015? These are separate to your agenda pack, and a copy can also be found in your information packet on page seven. Of course, I look into the announcements. Members may note that we have oral question on the length of our meetings. So come with our productive, effective meeting tonight, and I would welcome if you could keep your contributions focused and brief, and that you all are respectful of who's speaking. Thank you. The public has received the invitations to attend the annual propagation of the Hoot Fair, which this year takes place on bank holiday month of the Fourth of May. If you would like to attend and haven't yet replied, please can you do so as soon as possible? New meeting pins are available for a crisp crack on this evening, and if you do need any, please could you have the right change?
Sale price this evening, Madam Mayor? For a sale price this evening, I'm getting £99 a bag.
Sorry, Madam Mayor. The council's annual meeting takes place on Thursday 28th of May. There are short letter of city letters asking if you would like to bring a guest to that meeting. Please do let Eleanor read a more or take on... Tom... Tom and Jay, sorry. No, if you require a guest ticket as soon as you can, so that seats around the premises of the Javon Hall are provided. The Vice-Chancellor and members of the Anglia University will be hosting a sit-in at the university on Thursday 17th of September. Will members please note to stay Thursday 17th of September, and details will be circled later through forms. The councillors, councillor Bluckhurst, Mobodros, Rayner, Smith and Tucker, who's turned on the council every May, have decided not to stand for re-election. All have given outstanding services for the respective boards and on the council committees over the combined service of 33 years. This year, we are losing some extremely able members, and on behalf of the council, I thank them all for the service to the city. And for those of you standing for re-election, I wish you luck. I have a big announcement also for somebody's birthday, who kept it quiet, which was in March, and they say happy birthday to councillor Hipkin, who was 18. And I'm here, and you'll get away with 55, 56, John.
You looked at me as if I was a marble of survival. And I wish it all happened. Okay, I would like to ask members to declare now any interest in the items on your agenda
before us this evening. Members are reminded that they can declare interest at any time during the meeting, at any time anything occurs to them during the debate tonight. We have no public speakers registered on this matter. We now turn to agenda item 4A on page nine, recommendation of the planning committee. Helen Coe approved practice, recommendations set out on page nine of your agenda. Is there any vote? We will now go to the vote. Please can I see those in favour of the recommendation? Then we now turn to agenda item 4B on page 23. Recommendation of the Civic Affairs Committee, members allow scheme. The recommendation is set out on page 23 of your agenda. Is there any debate? Councillor Hipkin.
Madam Mayor, I don't propose to put on a formal amendment, but there is one feature of the members' allowance scheme which I think we need to reconsider. And that is the special allowance which is paid for attendance at area committees, and I have particularly in mind the allowances paid to the Chair and Vice-Chair of those area committees. I see no good reason to treat area committees any differently from any other committee. And I think it's probably yet further evidence of the attempt to make them seem important. But I would suggest that the money which could be saved from removing allowances to area committees should be diverted to members of the planning committee. Now, I think members who are not on the planning committee sometimes overlook the fact that to be a member of the planning committee is to commit yourself to 12 monthly meetings of the year, to a great many development control fora, to site visits, to briefings. It really is the most demanding of the roles on council in my view. I've served in many capacities, but as a member of the planning committee, I find it takes up a great deal of my time reading reports, advising members of the public and so on. So I do really think that we could make this adjustment, that there is no good reason for paying area committee members a special allowance, since it's a committee like any other committee. And I would therefore urge those who will determine these matters to bear this in mind when they come to think about how they might next year perhaps adapt the allowance scheme.
Councillor?
Just a brief contribution. The allowance scheme has hardly changed for about seven or eight years, and so there are issues that are definitely worth having a look at. The curious arrangements for members of area committees were actually a decision of a previous review to ensure that any money that was allocated went to that bench to every member of the council. So as someone, councillor Hipkin, who is longer in the tooth on civic affairs issues than yourself, that was the reason why that small amount of money was allocated to every councillor, because within the curiosities of the allowance scheme, everything that was paid to the leader or to the executive councillors is based on a multiple of the payments under the current scheme, of the allowance for everybody. I don't recommend spending too long trying to understand the niceties of the current system, but it is full of inconsistencies. And clearly, the other aspects of the area committees, including some aspects like the area committee chairs, have been part of this review. So, yeah, I'm not on Civic Affairs Committee, but I do think it merits that being a review mayor during the coming year. So the issue that councillor Hipkin raised is not some kind of reward trying to argue that area committees are the bees' knees, albeit that some of them still believe more passionately than councillor Hipkin that they have a role in the city.
Councillor Swet?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. While I'm not really against a review, if that seems appropriate, I think that would be a good idea. I would like to agree with councillor, but the important thing about the allowance to the area committees, please give those to all councillors, including the backbenchers. But it's not as if we're only just adding it to the backbenchers' allowance, as it were, that will have repercussions. So it's like one of those tangible bits of wood, if you pull one thread, rumors knows what will happen. So I'd also, and I'd also think of members at this stage, and I'm glad councillor Hipkin is not suggesting that, because I don't think that would be a good idea, a full review, why not?
Thank you. Can we now go for a vote? Please can I see in favour of the recommendation? Okay, oral questions. Oral questions. This item will last a maximum of 30 minutes. Conclusions of 30 minutes executive councillor or leader has appropriate made by a written response to any questions that have not been covered. Will the councillors please put their questions in order shown in the council information packet, starting on page 31? Councillor Carrick has the first question. The executive councillor, chair or nominee will have up to two minutes to reply. The questionnaire will have two minutes to put a supplementary question or to see that publication of response to the original question. The executive councillor, chair or nominee will have further two minutes to reply to the supplementary question. Question?
Madam Mayor, dear, the launch of Cambridge Live in the first was the culmination of many months' hard work by many people within and outside of the council. And I want to put on record my thanks to everyone, whatever their role you are involved in the project, an extremely complex project, from inception to conclusion, ensuring very soon that we will already transfer over 50 staff, and of course, thanks to the emergence by cultural services, securing those services future for Cambridge public. The launch of Cambridge Live itself was a very successful start of a welcome breakfast for the union transport staff, continuing with free performances and activities during the day to celebrate a high-quality and vibrant programme presented by Cambridge Live, completing with a free public conference at Concord Exchange given by the Cambridge-based Dowling Salmon Collective in the UK, which saw 100 performers on a stage and packed forward to welcome in the new organisation. It's worth mentioning that as well as working on the projects that Cambridge Live, city council arts and recreation staff have also been working flat out to maintain business as usual, with working on detailed preparations for the summer events programme. The summer programme was already well advanced by the first, and the staff from the city council have now transferred over to Cambridge Live and are continuing work on final preparations and planning. The summer events programme starts with a substantial middle affair this year opening on 20th of June and continues for the big weekend on the 10th, the 12th of July. Preparations for work events are on track, and although the programme heats up for big weekends, including the headline acts, are still confidential, I think it will be one of the best yet. The folk festival opens on July 30th, the headliners were announced earlier this year, and tickets are already nearing set out. 30th Mayor's Day Out is already being planned, as are the Jazz and Brass and Brass concerts across the city's parks. Forty tests on the events programme and content will be released any time.
Questions?
Thank you. In terms of the police commissioner system in Cambridgeshire, I think as someone who's active on the policing crime panel, I have two major concerns about what has happened in a change that the Coalition government brought in, which was also voted for by the MP for Cambridge. And that is that, first of all, there is no longer a voice from each corner of Cambridgeshire that actually is listened to by the police service. We have a panel, and the only conduit through to policing is the Commissioner. Now, whatever we may think of the incumbent, and he has taken on a number of interesting initiatives, as well as gone on to ground that we would debate with him, that isn't appropriate, because he cannot, as an individual, or she if it was a woman, they just cannot represent all parts of the county. So we're immediately losing the accountability that was better under the police authority. And in the process, we're also losing the accountability of the chief constable. The chief constable in some parts of the country, like in Kent and in West Midlands, actually does go out to public meetings and is held accountable. But the way he operates in Cambridgeshire is that despite the efforts of the Police and Crime Panel, the chief constable has not actually been seen in public, actually reporting on what is happening within the force. And there are major changes going on. So I think that those of you who might have been to the panel or who have seen reports of it can see that the system just isn't working. So quite apart from my party loyalties and the knowledge that if a Labour government is, or a Labour-led government is in position after May, that it would be a priority for the Police and Crime Commissioners to be abolished, there is clearly no logic in this change. And then, as councillor Sinister said in the answer, there is a private office with a £1.2 million cost with a chief executive or a head of that office who's paid £89,000 a year. And that just isn't a good use of public money.
Councillor, do you want to reply?
I completely agree with everything that Liz has said, and I would very much forward this in describing her position.
Thank you. My understanding is that the petition that was submitted was in actual fact submitted by a third party and wasn't submitted on the County Council's own website, which meant that they couldn't validate, lots of bits and pieces they couldn't validate, they couldn't quite validate who worked or studied within the county. So some of those, I'm not quite sure the number, I did hear 300 or so, had to be revalidated, but I believe they did accept it in the end. But the City Council has a different e-petition facility available on the website, which is common to a number of authorities. There is a guide on there, I must admit, I've never looked at it until you asked that question, so I thought, well, I can't have a little guide around there today, so I've done that. But there are other e-petition products available, so if somebody should, third party should submit any petition to the city council, which may not match our system, which would be very, could be very easily misinterpreted, and it could render invalid for a number of reasons, such as things that have happened with counties. So I think it certainly does need looking at, and we will do that, and I think that is the right thing to do. But in the meantime, obviously, council offices and council the whole will take a dramatic approach to what we've got, and we'll view e-petitions sympathetically. But I thought I had a quick look at it. On the front page, to get to it, just more online services on the front page, click that, you're in. I want to see how easy it was. And then it came up with active and completed petitions, and I thought, well, how many completed e-petitions have there been? So I had a look for a year, so a year ago today, or two years in fact, from 16th to the 4th, 2013 to today, there's only been five e-petitions to the council. One, non-collection of bedroom pets, which attracted one with fondness. Twenty-five hours speeded it on Victoria Road for safety reasons, that was a really whopper, that was 62. Fences grazing in Colman's Lane, that was 12. I love this one. Abolition of apostrophes on road signs, I did like that, that was one. And saying no to Royal Road mosque, that was two. So we've only had five petitions, but you know, it's not a great response to that, we need to do something about that, but that did give me a few hours' pleasure looking at that thinking, apart from the actual system itself, yeah, people aren't using it, but it's a great thing, we need to think about it, we'll come to civic affairs, what the outcome of that will be, who knows, I'm not technically enough minded to actually answer that here and now, but I bet I will be by the time it comes in. Thank you for that suggestion.
Thank you. Very much welcome, councillor Bluckhurst's response to that, and the fact that it's not fully looked at yet by civic affairs. I noticed in skimming the constitution that the final page of the appendix does say that if you feel your petition hasn't been done properly, assuming you've got more than one respondent, or even 62 respondents, that the organiser has the right to request the council for overview and scrutiny committee review steps. I'm always rooting, I'm always rooting, thinking, but we don't have an overview and scrutiny committee. So I think the fact that councillor Bluckhurst pointed out that this comes from a bespoke approach to e-petitions probably doesn't mean that the City Council knew it. It is very, very harmful. And I would therefore like to suggest, Madam Mayor, as this is my final meeting of, after 20 years, a final thing to suggest that maybe a review of the constitution would be a good thing to do. And I'll be welcomed by those of you who are elected, of course.
Please, please, you can ask a question by the ground, thank you so much. It's never going to happen again.
Councillor Swet? Number four.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. All the definitions are sent out on the city council website, I suppose that's a prior question. However, I will answer it. The responsive repairs categories, one are emergencies, two urgent repairs, and three routine repairs. And then it goes, I think it is, what emergencies are. Response target with 24 hours, which generally same day and reported and attended within two to three hours, and may are blocked, drained in certain circumstances, serious electrical faults, faulty smoke alarms, if they are council installed, you can't turn them off, complete power failure, bursts or leaking supply pipes, a toilet not flushing, if this is your only toilet, major overflow, when water is gushing out, it's obviously terrible. Major roof leaks, broken heating systems, we will provide central heating within eight hours if needed, and proper lifts. Sometimes we can only make save, i.e. a central repair, and then have to come back later to finish the work, for example, out of hours repairs, or if major work specialists pass out to be ordered. In the event of an emergency that is life-threatening or causing major damage to property, you will always aim to attend immediately and can divert later from other workers. Overall performance, April 14th to February 15th, total jobs reported 3,348, total jobs attended completed within 24-hour target, 3,342. Percentage performance, 99.82%, this gets better. Urgent repairs, response target within three workmen, subject to tenant access. Emergency repairs that we have already made safe, electrical faults where there is no risk of injury, problems with the hot water supply, leaking waste pipes, taps that cannot be turned off completely, minor roof leaks, faulty entry fans, broken heating systems in the summer. Appointments can be made to suit tenants with this mainly waiting log down. Overall performance, April 14th to February 15th, total jobs reported 1,866, total jobs attended completed within 24-hour target, 1,844. Percentage performance... Oh, please! I was getting to the good bit. I was getting to the good bit.
Mr. Swet? Thank you. One thing that wasn't in that list, and I doubt it could be on third list, do you think it's acceptable to leave from Friday to Monday an electronic door which was fast and longed open where the tenant is living in a wheelchair, and that door is their only access or exit?
I understand that recently there was an emergency repair required for an electronic door for a disabled tenant, which took over a week to repair, including several visits and changes of the parts by the specialist door control company. But this is a why not. No, of course, it's not acceptable. There are occasions where we can't, you know, the repairs cannot be done in that time simply because parts are needed. So this is not a failure on the part of the council, this is parts that were needed. See, that one last little bit?
Go on, go on.
I've got to finish, haven't I? Routine repairs. I hope you're taking notes, you might be, let me know. Fireplaces bruised, cutters and drainpipes noisy, noisy hall valves and toilets, frozen hens and air ducts. Minor recording rendering sinks, cars, kitchens, units and fittings, likely woodwork and minor fencing work. Overall performance, April fourteenth, February fifteenth, total jobs reported, one thousand six hundred and... No, sixteen thousand one hundred and twenty-nine. Total jobs attended, completely within twenty-four hour target, sixteen thousand and forty-three. Percentage performance, ninety-nine point four. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Mr. Swet?
Thank you, Dye. Thank you, councillor Dye. You know, everyone there has been wishing good luck to the councillors who are lucky guys much longer, they're the lucky ones. Basically, in terms of the public responsible bits, as I think the public wants to be quite good so far. Obviously, in terms of turning out to the much maligned areas committees, we would like for the public to contribute, I think, for my sins being to all of the different points, either as a council or as before, and it is quite marked, the difference in attendance. What I would say is that working through what has become of the bits is, I think, what councillor Dye would promote, what is now incorporated into the crime data reports. I think the public wants the work done in terms of our sort of hang-on pest control is quite good, and the range of preventative works, they will be doing a tour, hanging on to them. The councillors have added a list of the works they have. We've doubled on to the doghorn hours, and all tries of security show the crime data reports exactly where the dog goes, where they're trolling, the success that they're having, some of the educational things they're doing as well so the public can, for the first time, have some sort of gauge or measure on what they're doing. In terms of the enforcement team, we've doubled from three to six. They will be in place since just before Christmas, and getting all trained up in a whole range of things to do as a council, very important. The long list is providing the crime data reports. They've had a number of successes. What we're trying to do as part of programmes that are being reported at the hearing, is roll out bins, improve education and so on, but not necessarily too competitive when it comes to fines and so on. But once we've removed excuses, obviously, there's no other option, and so on, of littering accounts to do, which are fine. Now, what I have tried to do is obviously the KMT and other committees, I think, why the council, how we handle fines and the things we do. I'm trying from now on, and it has been the case for a few months now, providing that data, we have the crime data reports so people can engage what the teams are doing, how we're doing, obviously, compared to other years in terms of, if you're just interested in this council initiative. At the top of my head, I think last year, a pretty good administration, it was about thirty-five. And since January, it's about sixty, I think. So you can see, obviously, the diversity amongst the many of us here, and I would emphasize about do you or not roll beyond this.
Thank you for that. So one reason I asked that question at our self-area meeting last month, we had last month, I'm just talking about how the travelling to Queenies and Cheryton, all the councillors cross-party that actually set a meeting, what one of the job they're doing, especially with the white bits and the blitz. I just wondered if the science happened in other areas, not just here. Thank you.
Just to finish, I think a great deal of thanks from all of us goes, should go towards the other ground, Jwett Young, who I think, leading in fairness to the opposition, and to the independent, and to, and that's the role that I'm supposed to play. I think everyone has really taken to some gusto in running data reports, and obviously, having the vote on Wednesday, it's become a lot easier for the councillors and all the structures I know of, from the Queenies Council, who do quite a lot with the visiting, for every councillor to feedback issues and so on. What I would like to add is, in credit to the opposition, I think they, the last time they, the crime duty committee, councillor Paddy was saying, was that, did say that the local would be hanging on to the reports, and I think that's, that's a fair reflection, that everyone welcomes having all of that data, and obviously, the photos, all the rest, it goes, it's all for the teams that are going out and doing stuff so they can see before and after, what the council's actually doing. What I would add, obviously, to my list, range of split down the way to the between, between area committees, that's obviously very important, for our training for service. The only additional things I can add, which some members might not be aware of, is obviously, as part of our programme, I think this was councillor Paddy, in my first meeting, made the point about the amount of litter, the waste, and putting that green in our public spaces, in around the special market. What we have done, and it is that we roll out some bits as you usually would, but from now on, we'll force some things to come back in, we're turning to permanent locations for bins. So basically, we've got all the other bins, ten per board, five dog bins for all the rest, and any extra recycling bin, we're getting fifty bins out of public spaces, and then around that kind of part, we've also repeated a few extra staff to deal with the high volume of litter and list picking and the entrance to some bins. And lastly, I'll just finish, the only other thing really to report back to councillors, is that we're all bits, and we're all bits themselves, we're having all sorts of going all the time, going all the time still. And councillors will remember, we had a poster campaign, that's not now, to dog out and park the bins, so that's now, schools, and that will come back shortly. So I would say, obviously, a credit to all the actual ground staff, farm and staffs, that's actually real hard work. They've done stellar work, stellar job, over the last eight to nine months. And we are completely on track to achieve what we're manifesting ourselves to, and hopefully, fruits of that will be more in the future, under the right rear wheel power.
Mr. Swet?
Question six. I said question six.
Thanks. Civic affairs on the eighteenth of March, where councillor Lipton was president, spoke out, members agreed that a meeting would be convened to discuss council meetings, that it would take place after elections and after the AGM, so we're expecting a meeting in June. And those invited will be group leaders, the Chair of Civic Affairs, Spokeswoman Committee, and the Mayor. So I expect a serious look at the effectiveness of council meetings. During my time, eleven years on the council, following up councillor Smith's comment, there have been two reviews, and neither of them went anywhere, and both of them were dissolved by the then-majority party. Certainly, issues relating to, issues like this should take account of all councillors.
Can I comment on that? Well, first of all, I'd like to thank the Chair of the Committee of Councillors, the person for having spent some time on this, and for his committee, in sympathetically entertaining our proposal. I think the point I want to make is, perhaps coming from the father of the council, which I think I know elevated to be, it's perhaps a little anomalous, but I want to plead the case for parents who have young children. If we are serious about welcoming membership of this council from all sections of society, well then, presumably, one of the things we'd like to hear is that the parents of young children are not going to be put in a disadvantage because of the way that this council works. And the way that this council works is that, as a result of extensive self-indulgence, speeches can go on until midnight. Now, you know, I don't know about other people, but we have young A-level students doing our baby studies, and the understanding is that we'll try and get back in good times so that they can get home and get to bed. And, you know, and that seems to be a convenient and sensible way. But you can't do that if you have this open-ended idea that things will go on all night. And I think, you know, it's not as if it reflects anything important about the business we're transacting. It's simply the result of everybody feeling that we're all entitled to have our say endlessly. And so I think that one of the ways we could get around this is for meetings before meetings, briefings and so on, where some understanding is reached about how the positions of various groups in the council are going to be represented, rather than just throwing it open and give it to everyone.
Having in the distant past written the model standard order list for the New Zealand Blooded Authorities, and then swiftly led the country, one of the options is to have debates or motions which actually take amendments of the motions at the same time. Now, I appreciate that that isn't maybe the standard form, but I think there are ways that the council could avoid there being three speeches by the same councillor that look, feel and look and read remarkably similar. And clearly, there are issues, both in terms of the procedure in the council and in the way that we distribute the amount of money that we allocate in allowances and we provide for child caring allowances and so on, that we should look at. I'm not saying that any of those factors are party to the decisions by the five councillors who are standing down, councillor Tucker, Smith, McGaughnessy, Rayner, and Blackhurst. But clearly, if you look at the mix of people that are sitting on the council, they don't represent the whole of the Cambridge community. And I do think we have to look at that. As someone guilty of long speeches, I'll end there. Thank you.
Councillor Dye?
Mayor, can I first applaud the father of the council for answering these questions? Sorry, Dan. Question seven.
Thank you. It came as something of a shock to me in investigating and trying to catch up with what's happening on demountable CCTV, to discover that on two recent occasions, in areas where we agreed with the rules that there were priorities to deal with petty crime or antisocial behaviour, that we were unable to put up the demountable cameras because the new lampposts installed by Balfour Beatty were not actually strongly enough to support them. And one of those is in Cars Ward, where we were asked to have a look at an outbreak of pet effects and damage to cars. So this is a serious issue, and it also raises both another dimension of the problems that we've had with Balfour Beatty, which go into other issues, which we haven't got time for. But they, it does challenge us, because it means that we may have to go firstly for a period of time in parts of the city without the precise locations that we want the CCTV to be. And we've got six of these demountables, and they work throughout the year, being targeted at specific problems around the city. And I know some of the targets, including in East Chesterton, in Market Ward, in Kings Hedges, and in Cheryhinton, where I haven't yet checked whether we'll be able to put these cameras in. So it is a serious issue, and it is another example, without, in any way saying it's specifically the County Council's fault, of why one councillor for Cambridge would be the answer, and we wouldn't get into these situations. We are going to replace the CCTV, and we will have to find out whether it's going to cost us more to go for lighter units.
Put one more in, shall we? Can I ask another question, James?
Another question.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yeah, the Tory announcement that if elected, they'll extend the right to buy to housing associations, which is a universal condemnation from housing professionals. So far, the criticism has focused on what it means for those housing associations. There can be no doubt that that criticism is well-founded. We already know the impact of right-to-buy in the local, their authority stock-owning areas. And the city alone has resulted in the loss of over half-house stock in the past thirty years, with that loss accelerating since the Tories and Liberal Democrats increased the discount in two thousand and twelve. But this scheme is even worse than the original right-to-buy, because they intend to use council-owned stock to subsidise home ownership by housing association tenants. Reading the policy exchange report where it originated, it is clear that the purpose is to drive low-income families and tenants out of water-earned expensive areas. While they are only expensive because the coalition has failed to invest in social housing and failed to build enough houses in the first place. The Tories intend to set the regional median market value for different-sized homes and force stock-owning councils to sell off any of their stock above that median. The policy exchange report actually dismisses setting locally or local authority district median market values, because that might mean people having a choice of where they live. Well, yes, that ensures no-one on low income gets a choice in where they live. The impact on Cambridge, where the Cambridge fund means those house prices are significantly higher than the regional median, will be immense. Officers estimate that up to seventy percent of our city homes' general stocks will have to be disposed of. That's around four and a half thousand homes, including the likely loss of all our two thousand three hundred, three and four bedroom houses, and probably most of our one thousand plus two-bedroom houses in London West. Seemingly, even Tories largely are actually turning our tenants out of their homes immediately, at least for now. So forced to sell and re-lets occur, our estimate is that we will be losing some two-hundred-and-fifty homes every year if this policy is implemented. This will be nothing short of a disaster for Cambridge and a disaster for those on our waitlist. It will also mean that housing association tenants who can right-to-buy will be doing so at the direct expense of council tenants. Housing associations have already said they intend to mount a legal challenge to the Tory plans, if implemented. And given the massive impact on the city council's home stock, we would have little choice but to do the same to drive, protect the interests of the city council and our residents from this rapacious and ill-fortowed Tory policy.
Thank you very much. We now turn to the motion, item six A, to be considered by the council. And call our councillor Martin Smart to move the motion.
Madam Mayor, please, my last, the councillor's consent to alter the motion and the councillor procedure will twenty-sixth, due to the decision while she's in this seat by the County Council during the process, can I see, to review the proposal?
Do you think that everybody has a reaction? Second question. Is everybody clear? Who can, in which place? In which place can I get people to turn to?
Say something?
You can explain if you want to, Martin, why you want to alter it. Okay, does the councillor agree to the motion being altered? It's all the Labour? Yeah, okay. The majority of power is with thirty-one Conservative, fourteen Libdham and eleven UKIP councillors. This year, Cambridge County Council plans to make cuts of 32.6 million. That was after cuts of 31 million the year before and about 70 million for the previous two years. Of the most recent cuts, there will be £1,600,000 cuts every three years in libraries. This comes at a time when the population of Cambridge is growing, increasing by thousands every year. In 2011, it was forecast to increase by 28% by 2031. Cambridge has the highest proportion of young people of all the districts of Cambridge. Some private schools are having to increase their capacity as of St Matthews in Cambridge, where I have saw a 50% growth in intake. This has become necessary to take account of the increase in new births as more families choose to live in Cambridge. The number of households in Cambridge is forecast to grow by 33% by 2031. We on the Labour side are extremely concerned about this cut to the central library for a number of reasons. It is already operating at capacity. I live in Market Ward and when my children try to use the library for exam revision and suchlike, they tell me that unless you get there first thing in the morning, then you won't get anywhere to sit down to study on the second floor. When I was there recently, at 5pm, it was very busy, including the third floor. If one floor is cut, where will the Tory go? Lack of proper consultation. I'm not sure who consulted whom. A petition of three and a half thousand people came about in a very short period of time. There was confusion about this, about whether this petition would be accepted. It eventually was. The proposal is not clear. I'm hearing a read of thirty, forty, fifty and sixty percent floor space per floor being cut from the library. I have a document obtained under a Freedom of Information request that shows that the proposed layout of the third floor, yeah, that shows the proposed layout of the third floor. However, it is not clear to me what percentage of cuts are necessary to fit things in like the cocoon private desks, the private desks office, the entrepreneurs lounge and so on. However, it certainly looks to me as if it's most of the third floor. The profitability of the venture is still not public knowledge and the officer advice report says the central risk is that it will not reach the forecast potential income. Also, not surprisingly, there are concerns over the future of the Cambridge collection and the city archive. As well as these, there is the cafe, where pensioners' meals and children's lunch boxes cost less than three pounds. There's the film archive, non-fiction books on art, music, sport, tables to work at computers, comfortable seating, a classical music collection on CD, music scores, the learning centre, a conference room, meeting rooms, exhibition boards and information and more, residence parking, the adult career service and the youth support service and last but not least, the staff. Also, there are events such as the Young People Drop-In, Adult Careers Drop-In, Meet the Authors and a poetry reading group, all happening on the third floor. Where will it all go to? At its starting conclusion, this is an altruistic concern for the people of Cambridge by the people of Cambridge. We need to be clear, when we tell ourselves a story about this change being to do with enterprise property, we not only lie to the public, but we lie to ourselves. This is a cut. Thus far, the council have worked hard to keep the library service going and other authorities have cut libraries, labour staff, youth coalition cuts. This proposal is clearly of great concern. Cambridge is areas of deprivation amongst the worst 25% of the country, mostly in areas around Kings Hedges, Mywood and in Abbey. When one in three children naturally doesn't have a book and that figure is getting substantially worse as time goes on, then we need libraries more every year, more than ever. I ask councillors to support Cambridge Central Library, or to support the motion.
May I call on the council to second the motion? Or would you second and I'd just skip there?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yes, thanks how I say that. I really don't envy the county council, though, actively about doing rising costs to having social care at a time when funding for the coalition movement is falling. They have some difficult decisions to make. Council's vote parties have commented, you know, the issues we're having with street rocks and as a result of cost-cutting there, problems with lighting turned off, as we move, the style now to be replaced. And, you know, this is the sort of hard reality of the cost that we're facing. But I do think, in this case, the Labour, this is one attempt at cutting costs, saying it just too far. We live in a city where we're blessed with two great universities, wealth of knowledge and resource. But sadly, it's also a city where lots of people don't have access to that. For the vast majority of normal people in the city don't have the university. You know, the central library is pretty much, you know, the best resource that they have to their self-contribution and also. I think that, you know, we've all spoken about this in political media, in social media. You know, I think we're all, or many of us, are in agreement that this is something the county needs to look at again and consult back properly. Just to keep brief, just think it's about time that we actually set something out formally as a council, modernising to, we think.
Both of these motions, the simple, are many of the motions are basically saying the same thing. An illustration of what I was saying earlier, it's a great pity that, you know, we don't have a culture in which the two sides could have got together and handed out a single motion for discussion. But such is the years we will go through a whole pantomime of having the two motions. Now, both of them refer to the severe financial pressures that the county is under. And the most eloquent speech in support of the council's position was made by councillor Whitehead, who is a Labour councillor on the count. She spoke very, very eloquently. She's the chair of the Children's Services Committee, maybe even the Adult Services, but certainly a committee which is responsible for the care of vulnerable people. And she made a passionate plea for the council to do all that it could to save her service area from further cuts. And I think one of the things which really annoys me and others is that this constant talk from the Labour side about coalition cuts. Yes, we know the coalition's made cuts, but do you have any serious intention to restore them? Of course you don't. Your government has made it perfectly, your prospective government, your party has made it perfectly clear that these cuts are not going to be restored. We're not going, the county's not going to suddenly find that its grant is going to be hugely increased. Of course it isn't. And so all services in the county are having to rethink themselves, reinvent themselves. And it's an absolute requirement that all of our assets, all of the county's assets should be absolutely sweated to the complete limit. Now, the library service has undergone a most incredible transformation as a result of these cuts. We're making far more use of volunteers to keep libraries open. The county is absolutely wedded to the notion of what they call community resilience. That is, communities taking more and more responsibility for the provision and maintenance of services which were formerly provided by professional members of the county council. And, you know, Cambridge City Council, Cambridge Library is not exempt from this process. We've had out now for several months a consultation, talking about the future of the service in Cambridge here. And it was very specifically adumbrated in that document that the central library would come up with ideas for an enterprise centre. It was there. Now, the fact that lots of people didn't notice it and didn't bother to comment on the library service document as it went out of consultation, it's a matter of regret. And I understand, you know, people are busy and they don't spot these things and so on. But don't pretend it wasn't there or that this plan is in some way being kept secret. It hasn't been kept secret. Now, I want to also point out that this motion talks about the Cambridge here collection. Now, the Cambridge here collection could just as well be housed in Eby as in Cambridge. You know, I suspect there's a slight Cambridge centrism here, a feeling that everything ought to be in Cambridge. Why shouldn't the Cambridge here collection be in Eby? What's intrinsically wrong with that? In many ways, you know, spatially, demographically and so on, geographically, perhaps it is more accessible to more people than Cambridge is. And so all of this stuff about it ought to be retained in Cambridge, I think it's highly suspect. Now, there is a case for retaining the local Cambridge archive in Cambridge. But the county has noticed how little interest in that archive has been taken by this council over previous years. And I would suggest to you that if the administration is serious about retaining this service in Cambridge, they should now more pay for it and house it and maintain it. And let's see how much willingness there is among the leading group to bring that in because it would be quite feasible. And I think also one needs to correct this notion that, you know, space is going to be lost. It's not going to be lost. It's going to be differently used and much of it will continually be used as it is at the moment. There are meeting rooms on the third floor. The meeting rooms will remain. They'll be differently formatted, differently positioned, but there will be meeting rooms. At the moment, people pay to use those meeting rooms. They will go on paying to use those meeting rooms under the new dispensation. Have I had my time?
Sorry. No, no. No, no.
Councillor Rayner?
This is a great interest for me, the central library issue. I was appalled by the length of consultations, being required to the county council, making their initial decisions on the future of the city council's public library, which sits in the heart of our city. The cities, it is the cities, so it sits in the centre of the city, okay? The good news is that due to the efforts of my Lidjo colleagues, this decision has now been reversed whilst further consultation allowed with the review to take place. The consultation needs to consult widely related people of all ages across the city. Feelings are exceptionally strong about this, with over three and a half thousand members of the public signing the online petition. Councillor's manholes were frowned with people's concerns and letters appeared in the press for children and students. Currently, all ages use the library, evaluate services and space for study. It is often followed with people accessing online information, reading books and journals, accessing archives, self-study, relaxing, having a coffee, and many, many other activities. It's difficult to understand how this will work effectively in a smaller footprint. This consultation must consider the impact in the reduction of space, and it is a reduction of space. The consultation needs to evaluate what services are valued and what new opportunities there might be to improve the rent and the opportunity for local people in an affordable way. Whilst it's recognised that the loss of county funds is primarily the driver of this change, we believe it is important to find commercial partners who understand and empathise with the needs of local people. One would believe that an enterprise centre could have funds for the library if it is affordable, enabling them to seek work, source help and information, encourage collaboration and offer virtual work environments and meeting places to develop ideas. If however, the enterprise centre is maximising revenue from its valuable city centre location, then it's likely to be shaped to serve the needs of traveling businesspeople from successful larger businesses who can afford the service rather than start-ups and SMEs.
Grossness.
The centre's most related issue is the plan to move the Cambridge here collection to Eby. This suggestion is concerned many level of people, historians, local community groups and charities who use the resource to excite many about the history of their own city. The city council have just given a grant to one of these groups for doing this. The lady organising it contacted me and said, "I don't want to spend this grant on train fares, don't have to Eby." We understand that this archive is given to the community on the understanding it can make in the city. Any decision to change this position should be made by the relevant scrutiny committee. I'm sorry if somebody objected to what I'm saying. I believe it's something that we should all buy into.
Thank you, Councillor Rayner. Thanks very much. I was quite really disappointed to hear the plans for the third floor library. I received a huge volume of emails on this and I think a lot of people did. And I was really exasperated to hear about the really poor decision-making process that led to that decision. So I'm glad the county's speaking up to you. I welcome the motion. I think there is missing one important point, which is talking about a discussion of the guiding principle of how we make decisions about how we use public spaces. I've heard of county councillors speaking of, quote, "making assets pay for themselves", and if that is actually the approach that our county councillors are taking, I think it's really, really unfortunate. I think that's really missing the point of public spaces. So I hope when this decision goes back to committee, that there will be some kind of smash about the principles that drives decisions, not just, you know, a really sort of facile balance sheet, basically, conclusion, without actually thinking about how these spaces are used and why that work exists in Cambridge.
Councillor Duncan?
I just want to concentrate on a couple of the aspects, although they've been, the first, I don't think they've been covered enough. One is this quite clear sort of lack of proper grown-up consultation between authorities, between the county and ourselves. I'm sorry, but as a senior councillor, I was not aware of all details of this proposal until fairly recently, and I don't think many others were, which I think said an awful lot about how county are, in many respects, selective on how they discuss big issues like this. We could talk about street lighting, we could talk about other park and ride, we're talking about all the changes there, but decisions are made and then discussed afterwards if it's, you know, going to influence that decision purely afterwards, they're not going to influence the decision. But I think you've got to get into an understanding here where major decisions impact on the city. My guess is that big towns in County York will be looking for the same degree of courtesy on decisions affecting them. But we need to have a proper grown-up discussion as prior to a decision being made. We respect the fact that the county have a role, a remit to make, you know, decisions on their service areas. We understand the fact that they're under severe financial pressures, John's and Lewis' do, we're all fully aware of. But I think the bottom line is, when clear decisions that are of major public interest within the city are about to be made, then we, as the sort of party representing clearly the city itself, should be properly involved in the discussion. We may put our views forward on behalf of residents. The county can then reconsider them. They can actually agree with them, they may not agree with them, that's the end, you know, in the end to do. That's how it should be. But they should at least discuss with us and listen to what we've got to say first. I have to correct councillor Austin. I mean, you've got to be careful what you say in public. This decision has not been reversed. This decision has been called in to be looked at again. So anybody here would listen to a comment like that and think, "Oh yeah, great, the county reversed the decision." They have reversed the decision. They obviously are in public, it's quickly a public pressure, quite rightly, the Tories are reconsidering. We may find, they may make the same decision again, we don't know that. But obviously that's what they're to do, right, and make their case. But obviously that's what they're to do, right, and make their case. But we, see, I'm making a clear case here on behalf of the city. The loss of a part or nearly whole of a core of a central library which fulfills only existing needs of the city residents, but will in the future, in the needs of a growing population and therefore growing need, should not be, you know, sort of removed when the existing demand is high and the future demand is even higher, I think is the case. So they've got to look at how that will work. The second point I'm going to raise, and I've tried to do proper research on this, and since the decision's been obviously called back to the county committee, we've got a bit more time to do it. But many of us remember when the Mandate was, this was in planning aspect, and all the various planning aspects of it. The central library, as I understand it, was part of the planning obligation in lieu of the community provision on the back of that future development. And it may well be that an enterprise centre does not quite meet their existing planning requirements. That needs to be looked at, and I'm asking the planning team to look at that closely, because clearly there is a slight distinction in terms of that type of use. So they need to be looked at and in terms of whether that's acceptable in planning terms. Because clearly, when the Mandate was envisaged, there was a great sort of discussion about the aspects of it, and the central library and the modern contemporary larger facility were forward as part of that scheme, was obviously welcome at the time, and has obviously had calls with support and consumer use ever since. So I think those two aspects are things that need to be looked at, but now that's done.
Councillor Hare?
Yeah, I just wanted to add a couple of points, and also to address the point that both councillor Hipkin and councillor Austin have raised about the city council archive. Fundamentally, as long as we have got two authorities, this is the county council's decision. But as councillor Blenko has said, we can't speak for the city, and the city councillors can't speak for the city if the majority of the councillors who are effectively deciding matters don't belong to Cambridge. And so it is back to the community infrastructure, the highways and community infrastructure committee to review this. But we do need to be passionate, as the residents have been and the people who've helped collect the signatures were, about saying where we stand. I think the park and ride decision was crazy. The park and ride has still not recovered its volume of business. We need to know what's happening there, because that is putting cars and parking onto Cambridge streets. The issue which we need to come to, and I'm sure we will, is that when we come back after the elections, in whatever shape the council takes, we have to come to the issue of overnight street lighting. Isn't right for the county council to say on this decision or on the decision of the central library that they are able to go ahead and make the decision without the engagement that the petitioners and the people who were there at the committee on Tuesday quite rightly pointed out. So the process is wrong, and probably there are issues from us where we take budget decisions, or we take decisions where we're not actually consulting the county council. I would hope that, oh, I mean, we do try, both the chief executive and I meet regularly, or aim to meet regularly with the county council, but I find those meetings particularly fruitless. Of all the meetings that I attend, and I don't know what happened with councillor Big and previous leaders, there has to be far more engagement between the two councils, because we are actually coming up with some really bad outcomes. And it's not simple, and that is, alright, councillor Hipkin could quite rightly say that the word coalition isn't exactly a necessary essential word in this motion. But it is, we're not taking away from the fact, and I am quite happy to state that the county council is in a far more difficult financial position than the city council, and other councils around this know that. On a specific issue of the archive, we do plan to take a report to committee in the autumn. It isn't as quite simple, I think, as councillor Austin, or as worthy as and easiest councillor Austin might imply. The archive is essentially one of council documents, council committee papers. I've got a, my, I can't even remember what it is, I don't even use it, but I've got a lot of that. And it's full of 2004 to 2007 papers. Now, what is in the council archive is largely that, going back a hundred years plus. And the number of visits to it is very low, and the potential expense of managing it and running it is very high. And so there will be a report to the appropriate committee in the autumn about that. And some of those options aren't easy about what its location is and how it's managed. It is a very large quantity of material that needs tending by the loving care of an archivist, and they're not cheap archivists, and we will need to come back to that. So, but the purpose and the way that my colleagues word of this motion is, we leave it open, we continue to represent the city, we don't try and preset conditions, but we have to stand up for the residents along with the work that was put into the petition. This isn't a good decision, we're not getting good decisions currently, because we're not getting coordination and we're not getting the biggest word consultation.
Councillor Sedgwick?
Uh, we've drawn it in.
Councillor Hall? Councillor Sedgwick?
Madam there, I do agree this much, but it is regrettable the way this debate is unfolding in our way, because the amendments, the revision of the amendments, the revision of the motion arrived with a semi-mid afternoon, and get very little time for other members to consider it. Despite that, I think the other side want to make that even earlier confusion. But the unfortunate part of it is that I think there are two parts of this, there are two parts of this which are really adequate to speak for the council, and I would like to move two further amendments to the motion, which I'm very happy to be taken New Zealand style.
He sent down a picture.
If councillor Blair could help with that. In fact, based on what he has just said, I think these are amendments that are all not to create the council any difficulty at all, for us to speak with one voice. The first amendment, and they can be circular later, please. The first amendment is to the final bullet point of the change of motion, which would remove the words "to increase income and increase business" to compensate for the cuts in the library budget. Now, it may very well be that what the council have come up with serves that as a purpose, but I think that it isn't for us to preempt the results of their own consultation. My understanding is that their consultation on their library's strategy, a big step up, is one that is going to continue running concurrently with the consultation about this decision. It may be it's an enterprise centre, it may be that business use is part of the elements that can be introduced to the library service to make the offering richer and to increase the income to the county council. But I think we should be thinking of this from a point of view of strategy for a service, and whilst that is still being consulted on, it's a pity that we are already trying to establish that business use is part of the answer. Many of the people writing to me, and I suspect other members, have a big question about whether business use is part of what's missing from their library. A library which is, as has been said, greatly used, sometimes overused already, and that recently reduced in size as well. And so it's difficult to see how this can be associated, how this can be associated without talking about space. So the point I'm making here is that by eliminating those words, we simply keep this option open and let the county do their work, not preempt what comes out of their consultation, and not give a hope for solutions that actually we might not like. That's the first of the two amendments, and the second one, which I think councillor Blair's already indicated with support, that we do ensure, as a report comes to work on our committees, to actually look at this question of the council archive and the Cambridge here collection. Decisions about which were taken in the 1970s, and it recently came to light that certainly the city council archive was deposited only in the county archive on the basis that it remained in the city, and these were specific narrative conditions in city council meetings in the 1970s. It's not to say that that has to be the decision that the library's for. As councillor Blair said, there would always be implications for that. But I do think we need to make sure that some of the members here take a conservative decision. And I've had many, many emails about people interested in that subject, even though, as he said, I'm sure there are vast volumes of people using all of that archive at the time. It does seem to be a subject that people feel very strongly about. So the two amendments are really dealing with things which people ask, I would consider, omitted unnecessarily by the change in the motion, but with these amendments, we'd be very happy to support all of them.
Thank you, councillor. And councillor Sedgwick, it's not the third bullet, it's the fourth.
Bullet, you are advising, it's the fourth.
Okay, two last seconds. I'll take the two together, councillor Sedgwick.
We're on the amendment, the first one.
Well, councillor Blair, we're going to take both of them together.
Do you want to use my right to speak on the amendment, try and elicit the explanation from councillor Blair?
When the leader of the government has been promoted, accepted in JSC. No, so they do introduce second amendment, please.
I've spoken to both members amongst the parliament. I'd just confirm to you that the short of the issue of support going after the bullet.
Okay, fine, okay. Is there a second, please? Councillor Hare?
What's your opinion, madam there? Does the, do the lifters intend to? Can you hear what I'm saying? Do the lifters intend to proceed with the motion? Is this additional to that motion? Are we on the clear to what's going on?
They're removing the motion. They're not moving the events. It's on page thirty-seven. I presume so, is that correct? Councillor Sedgwick, that's beautiful.
The amendment that was submitted as a cheap paper that was on our table, we came in, would be withdrawn. It has not been moved, but the amendments that we're reviewing, the two guys' votes are on, it's too small as a paper.
Thank you. Do you want to speak with councillor Sedgwick, can you also at the post? Okay, I've put him on the list, I've got councillor Roberts, then I've got him, okay? Councillor Roberts. Councillor Roberts?
Just a quick point, madam there. Obviously, deeply loved councillor Sedgwick. What I would say is that I find it slightly wrong that it was the attack does for confusion on this matter, when, A, you're the one we can't be doing right now, and secondly, when the leaflet goes out across this entire city, pointing out that the council has decided this on the library, it's not pointing out which council, which might be linked to the fact that all of us as city councillors have so many emails on the matter, instead of to county councillors.
Madam there, the most important decision that has recently been made is the acceptance by the county that it has made a mistake. It has made a mistake in that the original proposal to transform the way it was third floor was used was hidden in a large document regarding the future of the library service. And frankly, for members of the party who had no other candidates, it was very difficult to spot that early anticipation of how the third floor may be differently used. Now, the point is that, I would like to point out, that it was the Conservative group on the county who admitted that that had been a mistake. It was the Conservative chairman of the highways and community infrastructure committee who freely conceded that the review should take place, who not only allowed the review to take place, but extended the consultation period by ten further days, and who has made it abundantly clear that everything that anyone wants to say about this question with respect to the library generally, or the particular central library, will be taken into account during the consultation period, and that they are open-minded about the changes that might occur. That is the official position of the, I can no longer talk about the ruling group, but they're not the ruling group. Frankly, these matters on the county are differently aligned at than here on the city, where you've got this confrontational thing of a ruling group and an opposition. The county council resolves matters through a collective committee system, and it relies very heavily upon spokes attending meetings, hearing what is being proposed, and communicating with their members, and letting their members know what is in the offing. And frankly, what has happened here, and I'm afraid I will have to point to the lifters, you've been let down by your spokespeople on the irrelevant committees who simply didn't notice that this was going to happen, and it's been happening since January. It's been, you know, we didn't mention the company because discussions were confidential. But if that had been communicated to your members, there wouldn't have been this degree of alarm. And frankly, I don't think you regret there was this degree of alarm, because you had to go inside with an election here. And you, you know, you've had, when taken out of your sails, and some of your members on the county have gone practically crazy because they haven't been able to grandstand as they had anticipated they would be able to, because the carpet's been taken from under their feet. You've got what you want there, you've got a review of the decision, you've got a council which is fully committed to a proper review of that decision, that acknowledges that they've got it wrong, and who wants the best outcome. And may I just finish by saying this, if the city council wants to make representations on this matter, this is the time to do it, and the county is listening. And I've already made it clear that I have very deep concerns about the removal of the cafe, and that I would like to see a reconfiguration of the use of that floor, so that some sort of cafe space, maybe not as large as the present one, but open to all library users, and I've been told. Good, thank you, that's the sort of input that we want. So may I just encourage all of you, collectively individually, to make those representations to the county. I can assure you that you will be heard with an open-minded council awaiting to hear your whispers.
Councillor Blair?
I'm happy for our side to agree to the two amendments that have been proposed. Essentially, this still is, with all of the aspects that debates do not easily get to the point, this is about the fact that it is the county council's decision, but there does need to be consultation. So I think we can accept the amendments, we could make different points. I think there are issues of huge detail. think the, uh, there are issues of huge detail which have to be wrestled with at the county council, which make it, make it difficult, and the issues that there isn't any clear overall control, and in going for a committee system, there's quite a devolution between those three committees, where they basically operate as three parts of the council without, um, without, um, being there. So the people at the county council who voted through the annual budget, um, did so, I, I, I hope when people look at the city council's budget, assisted by the standard of paperwork, we see everything visibly, but it's changing. We don't necessarily go into the depths of looking at the non-near expenditure sometimes as we should, and that's obviously something this council has to do a lot better, but I think, yeah, there, there's a whole bundle of issues in the way that the process is, and the fact that the county council doesn't have that clarity that, that it would, if, if it was in the traditional model, weak or strong, there being a, a group that is actually able to, uh, provide the, and then elevate the openly and easily scrutinized. So we do, as the representatives of the city, need to put across what the city's view, and we know what the city's view is about the central library, and I think with those amendments that have been suggested, that addresses it. The archive is not a free lunch issue, i- if it is going to stay in Cambridge, it will cost this council, um, and if it, if it's going to be looked at by the committee in the autumn, then there has to be an assessment about how many people have been listening. I know that councillor Rosencrantz, while he was still a councillor, was spending a lot of time in the archive, and I'm not sure why, but, but we may find out why, um, but he is one of the very few people who have been there recently.
Thank you. Councillor Roberts, stop.
Thanks. So, um, yeah, just one of the points, so councillor Hipkin seems to have conflicts of interest, as far as I can see, although, I mean, in my, when I presented the, um, what I said about the motion, I was very keen, as of right now today, not to be critical of the county council, because I understand their position is very difficult, the cuts that they have to make, and I've spoken to, um, their colleagues there, including Ashley Walsh, who's sitting behind me, and it is a real problem for them, but nevertheless, as city councillors, we stand up for city residents, and that's my and our job to do. So I think when you're attacking this at the council on the basis of what we're saying on the county, it's a difficult situation. Also, something's been said about the Conservative group and such like on the county, as I understand it, have, have the Liberal Democrat group on the county council been to the cuts? So I think that needs to be known, I think, in that sense.
Councillor Sebs.
I think, I think, I think the only benefit to the, uh, the chaos has been unleashed this evening, is that on the students and Liberal Democrats, we have to pump a lot of leakers. To reiterate a point that councillor Hipkin has made, I mean councillor Austin, uh, you know, has told us how the Liberal Democrats have saved the library. Let's not forget that we wouldn't be debating this tonight had the Lib Dem spokes, councillor Van de Ben, not turned up at committee, and said the Lib Dem defined the whole thing. It's like saving a man, you've just kicked off the boat yourself. Sometimes one wonders why they bother, don't they?
Councillor, there you go.
Yeah, I just want to come back, because I said in my opening remarks, this, this is about grown-up discussion, it's about understanding, understanding actually the position that county councillors are in, and they are city county councillors, and, you know, let's not, you know, dislodge ourselves of that responsibility that they have in that, in that regard, because they have a much tougher responsibility, as we all know, than we do budget-wise, because of the few, you know, cuts and severity of the current situation. That's why I don't quite, although I'm going to obviously, uh, bow to my, um, uh, group's, uh, uh, view on this, this, this first little change, though it seems insignificant, when it talks about removing the phrase 'to compensate for the cuts to the library's budget', because that's what it essentially is doing, is actually missing the point, because we actually know as city councillors why, uh, that original decision, uh, was made, although we, you know, put in the fact that it was made without proper due regard of consultation with the city itself, and I think they obviously accepted that, but we need to be, uh, going about this, because we're going to have to help them find a way to compensate cuts in their library budget if we want to retain full use of this third floor. Now, let's be sensible about this, we need to be constructive, find and assist them in trying to maintain for our city residents full use of that third floor as it stands.
Thank you. Okay, have nobody else down on my list for the debate? Um, so does councillor Herbert or councillor Martin Scott want to have a, have a right to reply? Okay. So I'd like to vote on the amendments. All those in favour of the amendments?
Thirty-six.
All those yes?
None.
And there's sections?
Thirty-five, I'm sorry.
Okay, any further debate on the motion? That's right. Any right of mine? Another one? Okay, so can you girls vote on the motion? And all those in favour?
Thirty-six, yes, thirty-six.
Those against?
None.
And there's sections?
Two.
We're now on to agenda item six. We now turn to the motion, item six, being considered by the council. A call on councillor Bick to move the motion.
There's actually a case, very.
Lady Manfred, um, have something to provide there perhaps? And for the record, I am tuning to within love, seeing whether this is made a difference later. And the previous motion, in its original wording, at least asked that the decision previously taken be reconsidered, and this motion asks the same thing, and I'm making a quality of bringing this issue back to the chamber. This is a very simple motion, it asks to reconsider what we should do now, does not talk the past, it does not seem attributing any more responsibility to the current state of affairs, it asks the executive to review or justify the decision, and I hope that members will view it accordingly. I invite members not to use this motion as an occasion for yet another extermination, of which the national and local administrations of the last forty years have been least defaced in delivering affordable housing. It's fair to say that things have improved in recent times, and I could take the opportunity now to recite the recent House polling statistics, nationally and in the country, and we could argue amongst ourselves for quite a long while, as if we were competing the actual candidates standing on doorstep, but we've had that face in the chamber recently, and it wasn't very enlightening, and it's not relevant to this motion, which is about the here and now, so I'd ask members to exercise a stance on that. Nor is this motion about frozen bonds and investment in commercial property for its own sake, we know that commercial property can deliver tremendous returns, we know also that it can fall. But again, we had that debate, particularly in relation to the investment now done in the local authorities' property, and that wasn't very enlightening either. The best we can say is that we learned that the executive councillor for housing was not an active participant in the decisions about H R A money in our property fund, but this motion is not about H R A money, so we can be honest with that. Let's be honest, this motion is about housing. So I would ask the executive councillor for housing to pay special attention, of course you will, this motion is about priorities, do we prefer priority A over priority B, and how we should be guided in establishing that priority. Undementedly, this motion is about what this council should be doing at the very top of its agenda. There is plenty of dispute in this chamber, that Cambridge has a housing problem generally, and more specifically has been sufficient of affordable housing, there is a need in this chamber that something must be done. Now, the Labour League brought forward a proposal in our budget at the moment, it did not find failure with the council, with the chamber as a whole, and so it did not pass. Life is full of little disappointments when you're a Lib Dem minority, that's true, but this motion is not about that proposal either. The Labour League promised us that they had something in front of us, and we only had to wait till we were filled. While we are still waiting, but this motion is not about the wait. I could wait, I'm a patient fan, I'll be happy to refuse a proposal when it comes forward, I only hope we'll be able to pay for it when that day comes. So as a council, there are things we can and should address in influence, there are things that we cannot, although much we might wish to do so. Life is full of little disappointments even for executive councillors. Cambridge is not crying out for investment in commercial property from us, that market can manage perfectly well without us, it is crying out for investment in housing, that should be our priority. I know it isn't easy, I've sat in those meetings, I know it isn't easy, and I know it hasn't been easy for anyone, and for many reasons, but we must give ourselves every chance of making progress in this section. But what are the returns, I hear some of the more cash-oriented members among you, surely we should think of the handsome returns we could make if this one time we choose commercial property over affordable housing, or other housing? But that should not be our priority here, it's a consideration, but not the priority, we should choose housing over commercial property, it's what our residents would expect. The alternative is to lock into long-term inflexible investments that can possibly get out as it possibly get in, we need to keep our options open, if you're going to serve and for secure. Madam Mayor, you may have faced this before in the electoral election part, maybe we should pull a result now, let's think the unthinkable, let's give it to the Conservatives. Are we willing, are we willing to trust Eric Minkelson's discretion to ensure that we can fund our housing needs? Do we think that the extension of right-to-fire is going to make things easier, we have the possibility? And I would commend them as the words of our own, the executive councillor for housing, reported mainly this morning, saying, "News, selling off more homes that currently housing on rent is maturely affordable is not the right way to tackle the crisis, building more homes that are genuinely affordable is..." Well said, councillor Price, I couldn't agree more. Or maybe we should think the other unthinkable, Ed Miliband at number ten. To address that, ladies, he will want to deliver on his manifesto's promises if he can, or rather more likely if he can play that sentence. Well, with Ed and Ed, there will be cuts in unprotected areas, we've already heard that, look away now, Madam Mayor, we are in unprotected area, and there will be no interest right to borrow for handsome, I've read that Ed's also on that one, and I'm a leader, so there are difficulties ahead, whoever wins. But I will say this to the Labour manifesto, it has one hit absolutely right, and I'll bring it to you, we will build more affordable homes by prioritising capital investment for housing, quite right, it's not a word about commercial property. Now, I could give you highlights from the Lib Dem manifesto. I could, I could, but I might, you can buy your own coffee from a great shop, if, uh, you may say that, Madam Mayor, down at the smoke, this profit, any time of this. But let's get out of business, enough of this stuff, let's do the hard work. What happens if things go wrong? What if the concrete goes into reverse? What is, which it surely will at some point in the next thirty years? What do we have then? On the one hand, we have commercial property that is unlikely to be performing and is hard to divest, on the other hand, we have homes for our residents. Do the maths, do the maths, the Hamilton, which we all rightly believe will deliver thirty-nine new affordable houses for a total capital outlay of up to seven million pounds, that is roughly a hundred percent five thousand pounds per home, or five point seven pounds per million pounds committed. If we do what the Labour manifesto suggests and prioritize housing, then for every million pounds we don't put in commercial property, we can have nearly six new homes forever, and we can recycle the capital to structure the financial territory, and we can have more houses forever. It's not the sole for housing problem, but as a start, it's not going to make things worse. Couldn't we all rather do that? Strategic capital investment is where this council should be. For us, housing is strategic, commercial property is not. So our return to fundamental question, what are we here for? Housing or commercial property? Most people in this chamber, I am sure, are attracted by the thought of more housing for our residents of all sorts. Most people in this chamber, I am sure, do not expect their final dying words to be, "I wish when I was a councillor, I'd invested less money in affordable housing." Madam Mayor, I would ask you, and each member in this chamber tonight, to support this motion, thank you.
Can I call on councillor to secondly? Councillor Bick?
Madam Mayor, um, the situation is currently that this council has its, has at its disposal fifteen million pounds in its general fund. The direction endorsed by the administration and their colleagues in the budget meeting was to spend eight and a half million on buying commercial property, and hold six and a half million in an unspecified holding fund, uh, which totally gets in no return for the council. This is set against an earlier decision to invest a further ten million pounds in a commercial property investment fund. That makes eighteen and a half million of public money being spent on buying commercial property assets, with a further six and a half million being held to no declared purpose yet. Seventy-four percent commercial property investment, twenty-six percent don't yet know. Madam Mayor, this positive binge on investing in commercial assets, for which there's no shortage of other investors, is at the very least terrifying. But to many people in the city looking for housing that they find difficult to afford is completely outrageous. From a financial point of view, it's perfectly possible for this council to invest in housing, even at sub-market rents, and earn a good break of long-term return. Surely it's the role of a local council like this to look after its financial investments in a way which both gains a return and also meets a direct social need. It's difficult to see that the administration in its plan today has actually done that, and it looks to many that it's lost the plot. On this side, we absolutely accept the value of some investment in the council's commercial property portfolio, but it ought to be a question of balance. A mixed portfolio, as what most advisers would tell you most times, is a judicious approach. Seventy-four percent on commercial assets at one time doesn't look like that. You've already bought your ten million pound stake in the commercial property fund, but you've not yet bought your eight and a half million of physical commercial property, nor spent your unallocated six and a half million, together totally fifteen million, the number I mentioned at the beginning. Now, you, you obviously didn't like our plan to invest the twelve million, um, into intermediate housing, producing a development of a hundred homes. There were a lot of objections, we had about timing, we had about location, those were the most common ones. The uncharitable would say this was all a bit of a smokescreen to cover for a pit of collective yawnful cocoonitis. But, but, but pursuing the more charitable interpretation, we want to say, okay then, develop a scheme of your own. Just reverse the mistaken priority that you adopted to spend most of the money on commercial property rather than residential investment. The money we're talking about here is not money any of us can expect to be retained. There may be only one chance to spend this money. So we're saying with our motion, let's get this right before steaming ahead down the wrong path.
Thank you. I'm going to have councillor Perry. Thank you, I'm going to have councillor Perry. Councillor Price, would you like to do your member there?
Yeah, it's fine.
And then after the list of...
Madam Mayor, I would be delighted. My word, only they've done everything they suggest now. Oh, there's no such thing as a point of order, is that straight out of your little book, carry on.
There's no such thing as a point of order. Check out, check out, there's no such thing as a point of order.
Rule 23 requires...
Read the constitution.
I've read the constitution, thank you. Rule 23 of the constitution requires amendments to motions are relative to the motion and also do not have a negative in the motion. The motion is about spending in priority, Madam Mayor, the amendment is a dive right about history from one point of view. It's like me posing you the question.
There's another card, imagine.
It's like, I'm just explaining the point. It's like...
You can't have no speech.
It's not speech, I'm explaining the point. Can I explain the point? Are we happy with that? So I'm just saying, the motion is about one thing, the amendment is about something different. It's like me asking you, Madam Mayor, would you like chocolate ice cream or vanilla ice cream? And the amendment is coming back that the question is to be about the ice cream towards the 70s and 70s. It's roughly the ice cream, but it's not relevant.
No.
Sit down, break the nation. Madam Mayor, the amendment is out of order and I ask you to pull this out.
Okay, I've got a little speech I'm going to read out to you all. My ruling is that the amendment is relevant to the motion and in order. It does not breach council procedure, Rule 23, which bans amendments that negative the motion before the council. The ban applies only to the insertion or deletion of the word "not" or "similar", where the same outcome could be achieved by voting against. This interpretation has been applied for many years and supported by the note to the procedure rule that refers specifically to the ban of amendments merely inserting or deleting the word "not". Councillor Price.
Oh, I get my going. My word, I've never had such hypocrisy in all my life. I decided, I've been challenging those delete all after council and insert, no, delete your motion and insert ours. I would think it's right. However, that is the system and here we go. And I'm just going to say, it only, it only, everything you've said, you did the smallest amount over the last 14 years, you might have some credibility, what you've done. When I first read this Liberal Democrat motion, my first thought was just to vote it down. We already know that the party opposite are financially illiterate from their mismanagement of this council's finances. But the motion makes it clear that they're also just illiterate. So to help them, I'm going to read out the last line of the budget description of the investment income fund. If you're seven on the line. When I get to that bit, I'll do that next slowly. Of the 2015-16 budget, they may include investment in general fund residential property.
Ah, residential.
Get me? Energy generation and other investment opportunities. The worst thing about your motion is its utter hypocrisy. That's the only reason I'm bringing this amendment. We decided not to bring motions to this council. It being in the election period, as councillor Avery has pointed out, he didn't want to make the motion political again. More, make the motion political. Well, I will make no apologies and I certainly won't bow to his requests for not doing so. For 14 years, you had the chance to do something to help those in the city who have no priority for social housing but struggle under high fibre rents and out-of-breach market sale homes. Those stuck in what is called the intermediate market. And for 14 years, you paid lip service to the problem. Just like the Tories with whom you've been joined at the hip over the last five years. You relied, they, sorry Madam Mayor, they, through you, relied on the market to sort out the problem rather than recognising that the market was creating the problem. Well, the City Labour Group does not share and never shared that laissez-faire attitude to the serious housing problems faced by an increasing majority of this city's population. And we came into power last May, determined to change culture in the council and improve housing options for all the city's residents. This is a multifaceted approach because there is no one answer. And so the amendment lists some of the work already put into place. We need to improve the private rental sector so that those who choose to or have to live in privately rented homes, have decent homes and decent tenants, and the costs they face are reasonable and proportionate. That's why we're introducing the Cambridge landlord accreditation and safety scheme and have funded greater enforcement against poor landlords. We need to make sure empty homes become usable homes for residents. And that's why they've made sure that the city finally has money as a resource to make that happen. Why didn't you do that when you had the, why didn't the Liberal Democrats, Madam Mayor, do that when they had the chance? And we agree that councils can invest in general fund property themselves, which is why we have included it as a priority for our new £8 million investment income fund. Over the last few years, there has been many examples of councils doing this, including South Cambridgeshire District Council, but not Cambridge. Why didn't the party opposite take advantage of the freedom to do this when they had the chance? Could it be because they didn't know where all the money was? But they didn't. Instead, we had suffered year after year of the same repashy for housing policies and suffered service cuts whilst millions lay dormant in the city's substantial accounts. Labour has done more in one year since May 2014 than the Liberal Democrats did in 14. And we will do still more. The Liberal Democrats offered no solutions when in power and frankly still don't. In fact, council a bit couldn't even answer basic questions about their own budget amendment in committing all this changer, chamber back in February. Madam Mayor, this amendment pulls apart a grandstanding motion by a party in opposition that failed when it was in power. Cambridge and our residents deserve far better and with us, they finally have an administration that will make sure they get more and better options. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Could I have a second, please, George?
I know, it strikes me as very wearisome that we have to go through the debate that we have in February for me. And I frankly think that this is an entirely frivolous motion, given that all it intends to do is to repeat a debate that we've already had, that we already won in February for political gain and near an election. So I'm not going to go through it. It's a great detail, we've got many debates over the nature of our majority loyalty to investment and how we prevent the need for many places further cuts to our services. All I will say is this. For the Lipton amendments, as we went through some detail in February, intermediate housing were built on a fairy dust timetable and a fairy dust process that was completely unshaped before, as was confirmed by all of the officers and the directors of the board in the past. In our budget, we've put 8 million into the investment fund, which is specifically in purpose of rehearsing general fund housing, which will allow us to make an investment in the intermediate housing market in due course, and plans are ready, which we are currently looking at. We also put 8 million into the commercial property portfolio. And the Liberal Democrats thought this, if we don't benefit from this, it's going to be a huge commercial property portfolio. Of course we did, and our budgets have been underpinning by years in the terms of this. And once again, we have the same old mistake, the same deliberate attempt to confuse the rate of return of capital value and paying suspected investment. It's not suspected investment. The rate of return of capital of commercial property is very, very stable, as all the figures as we went through last by the show. It's not suspected investment in capital values. And the reality is that commercial property is an investment that we can make in short term that will actually bring an income, genuine income, rather than fancy income, the council's big amendment involved, which will allow us to prevent and having to make further cuts to frontline services. So yes, councillor Avery, I said something along the lines of it's a balance of priority. But yes, balance of priorities, partly you want to make an intervention in the housing market, but partly you want to prevent the need for further cuts to our frontline services. And the whole, the massive whole that was included in the Lipton budget amendment, which added up to over £2 million over four years, is £2 million worth of cuts to this council's frontline services that they don't want to talk about, that their plans necessitate, and massive balance is being struck. And this Labour administration, by actually doing the hard work, of course, they've spoken and talked about the actual context of this whole debate, which is that this money would be there to invest in the first place, and we haven't done the hard work of looking at our advanced reserves and reversed years of your tired laziness when it came to looking at our unripe financial strategy. So if you want the next four years, the city's council to have to make much more sweeping cuts to our frontline services, that means adopt the Liberal Democrats' approach. And also to compare to say that the investment in the CCLA property fund is comfortable is not true. Because A, the CCLA property fund is a diversified portfolio, B, it's been made, the investment has to be kept forever or not, it's been made in a tired, fated way, it's been made through trade big management. And as a result, we actually do have a balance, traction of 8 million investment income funds, proposals for which we will be involved at the time, and we're enabling in commercial property. And I just want to hear whether the Liptons are going to enable these £2 million worth of cuts and whether they're not making these investments or getting that return.
Okay, you have an option here, councillors, whether we break now, I think we should break, or have the debate and finish this motion and then break. Or do this one and the next one, then go home. So let's, up to you councillors, what would you prefer to do?
All would.
All would, okay, lovely, okay. So the first name on my list to debate is councillor Perry.
Hush. So, Madam Mayor, I was just told by the Casa Roas to keep it short and sweet. So I shall aim to do so. The Lipton motion might be about here and now, but our investment plans are about the future. The Liptons hope to somehow spend finite council funds in the hope that at some point we all win the lottery or find a leprechaun at the end of the rainbow. However, I hope that our plans, which I agree to fund public housing, which we all want to do, and as a public service worker, will never be able to afford a house in Cambridge, let's face it. I agree that those plans are very important and we hope to, God forbid, fund other projects as well. I agree that actually council investment is very important and therefore have to support this amendment. You ignore the fact that healthy cities actually need a combination of both housing and investment in our commercials, in our commercial property. And as councillor Vic says, there's no shortage of investment in commercial property, suggesting that actually the commercial property is in fact a better investment than a leprechaun at the end of the rainbow or a lottery to get.
Councillor Roberts.
Just very quickly, the most amazing thing about councillor Avery's speech of all today, it's probably rehearsed several times. One of that is, we're at the stage in this council where every decision that we've made in previous full council is then reviewed at the waste of all of our time. It at least the Liberals seem to like both of them, obviously instead of disagrees with them, and then they go back until they get the right decision, not as far as their concern. And I can say, and it is interesting, the total lack of faith in the Cambridge economy, as we've heard tonight, they now predict that the Cambridge property will falter going forward, that commercial prices will decline. So I hope we factor that into, for example, your business rates figures, your new scheme and all the rest of the big deal there. And I like to think that councillors on this side have a bit more faith in how Cambridge will fare up into the future. They also add that it's quite often the case that there's some sort of councillor thinking something about Cambridge exceptionalism. They're effectively liberal Cambridge exceptionalism. Everything that they often come out with, if you just look at another council, the Liberals run elsewhere, it's the complete opposite of what they do. Sadly, I have lived under the ghetto jackpots of the Liptons in Bath. And in Bath, they've put £40 million into rebuilding a whole rented private baths because they said at the time, against the Labour group, the commercial property should give them enough money to build housing and pay off debts and all the rest of the future. So it's just in Cambridge it appears that this is a policy. And they also say, if you're looking through your plans, we've gone through all of this, we really need to go through it again, and if we're going to go through it again, give us an answer on your road, because your plan can't be predicated on building on fantasy fields across the North Road. And please let me know, because a lot of what is on your road comes under me. And I'd quite like to know, A, where you're going to put it, and B, what your time scales are. Because at the minute, they're complete fantasy.
Okay, councillor Price.
Not a good job, then. I'll come back at the end.
Councillor Sarris.
Hey, Madam Mayor, in Eastchestershire, we see on daily basis how committed the Liberal Democrats were to social housing. Every time you walk past a derelict house on Water Lake. And that thing, I regard the judge of the Liberal Democrats' commitment to housing, not in terms of the houses they promised in the future, but the houses they voted to demolish in the past and the damage they did to our counter housing stocks then. But let's imagine there's been some great change apart on the part of councillor Vic as his fellow councillors. If the Liberal Democrats are now so committed to social housing, maybe they can explain why the Liberal Democrat candidate for Highbury, Tim Ward, an attacking labourer for planning to build socially rented housing on Water Lake Road, accusing us of social cleansing for trying to house a socially disadvantaged. Is this, Madam Mayor, not just another example of them saying one thing in this chamber and another thing when they're trying to soak up Tory votes at the door?
Councillor Ross and Sarris.
So it's a fact of separate accounts, what my notes from there. So I remember the councillor Rayo, as I said, in 2015, cutting the council, which of course they weren't in actual time. So this seems to be a similar kind of thing, it's going to come in the leaflet soon. Be about, you know, the council not investing in social housing and such like. I think I referred to my radiator at the time, I'm going to have to put shelf above, I think, for the stuff that comes through the door of the days. Just a bit of advice to that, people I've known who are really fed up with my people again. So if I were you, I would just cut down a bit. What I really wanted to say more seriously was a response to councillor Vic, who, I can't remember if it's his apologies, but he said something along the lines that we were financially incompetent, something like that, about the way we run the council in terms of investing in private rented, you know, commercial property. So I don't think he's forgotten, but over the last 14 years, I can't think of anything good to say about what they've done. But I can think of things I've noted from my February council notes. So it's £9 million lost by, I signed it, by 2008. £644,950,000 lost in the festival ticket sales losses. £2.3 million accounting error 2013. The poorly organised funds of the council are counting for approximately £1 million per annum loss in the interest that could have been used from that money. And I think I ended on the compound interest loss over the last 14 years, lack of financial reverse, financial management has cost the residents of this city millions of pounds.
Councillor Beck said.
Madam Mayor, I'll just give you a fair warning, this intervention is likely to have come through jumping up and down like somebody else did. Let's look at the Liberal Democrats' record on social housing, they have control of this council. Well, for 10 of those years, their solution to the social housing problem in Cambridge was bullying one of the city's main employers out of the city, and building everything up on marshes. A plan which was pying, a sparring was never going to happen. When they finally realised that wasn't going to happen, they were stuck. What did they do then? They decided, and they had a record of this at the time, they decided that what they would do is they would break up viral communities, like the marshes being by a border in the Child Road, pull down most of them, pull down those communities, split them up far and wide and build on most because they had no greater ideas. Now, they had a record on that, because they'd already done that once when they were in their time in control of the council. They took a spurious amount of information from the county and decided to try... They took a spurious amount of information from the county and decided to transfer Sheldon Housing out of city control into housing associations without proper consultation with the tenants, but also, in some cases, to sell Sheldon Housing for the highest bidder, which could have remained as Sheldon Housing in the private sector. We know they were going to take the dollar, and what they did was sold it off into the highest bidder in the private sector, the Cape Spirit House. I have seen this chamber on many occasions, for many years, Liberal Democrats have no real interest in social housing. They have sat on that side of the chamber, this side of the chamber, you know, Madam Mayor, and they have made fine words, but they didn't actually do anything about it. I think we've got there financial mismanagement of the council. I'm not going to go over the points of councillor Smart's favour when it, Madam Mayor, but I would say that in 12 months, we have done more to stay alive for financing this council than they've done in the previous 14. And in the last couple of years, when it comes to the big one, the control of the council, the leader of the council, it was like a rabbit caught in a headlights. There was money sitting there with absolutely negative amount of interest, money that the Liberal Democrats could have been doing something with, but they did nothing, because they were so afraid of making another big mistake, as they made several in the past, they were too scared to do anything about it. Thank you.
Councillor Avery.
I'm happy to discuss one of the amendments, because I can tell that we're getting to the past or the future. There's one really interesting point that's come out, and we've lost our executive councillor, who apparently finally did the hard work of looking at the reserves. I often wondered why it is that this money suddenly arrived, and you're surprised, I'm sorry, I often wondered to myself, Madam Mayor, why it is that the group that is now the leading group did not do the same degree of scrutiny of our reserves when they were in opposition, did they not tell us? We heard it from the very mouth of the executive councillor for finance and resources, that at last he did the hard work of looking at reserves. So, all we've heard on this amendment, this discussion about the past, we've had no attempt to allow scrutiny of a decision made. And that gives us a democratic test. Last council meeting, a member of the party, came and asked a very logical question to councillor Ogoi, about something which was a very difficult decision she had to make. And she made a very good effort at answering the question and explaining her decision, and all credit to her. And what we get here now, rather than an explanation of a decision made, we just get a history lesson written by the goal winners, because apparently you won. Or we get a recovery. So, this isn't about you won and you lost, this is about what should we do now, and always have from this amendment debate, is more turning over of incorrect, unsubstantiated facts, I'm sure, on all sides. That will not help us. Let's deal with the problem we have, let's look to the future.
Councillor Saris.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I do not intend to retract to the first part of our time in London, when we were allowed on building operated by the then Labour government. I hope, I hope that should the presence of National Labour Party be in control, with or without allies, they will not revise that. I hope that they won't, I would also hope that the chancellor elect, with that sort of phrase, we consider us the question of the H M R cap. As that, I think, I think you may read on both sides of the cap, will be one of the best amendments that would be done. But as we've seen, despite of all the attempts, the Treasury seem to have their eye on it all, but we will see what happens with that. The other thing I don't want to go over is spelling out the details of what we did when we actually called it, which will end in the last part. I'm extremely pleased that, for the most part, not this time, but for the most part, the new rule group has picked up and carried on those things, which is in their memory. And they've added some things, but they've also abandoned some things. Okay, that's your choice. I don't intend to go over it, because I just want to go to the crucial point, which is the priorities. I just find it surprising, disappointing, that the priority to build houses is dropped or at least put on hold while other factors are considered, because I would have thought that it would be your top priority, certainly.
Okay, councillor Beckstede.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I've been a usually deflector, but my thoughts are starting once a day to the 11th of June 2014, and the executive councillor for housing newly appointed, voted and engaged in use, I'm not so desperate at producing my magic wand. Well, it's true, Madam Mayor, I haven't seen any magic in my life since, but tonight's amendment does bear all marks of the end of a precarious trick's misdirection. A motion of 34 words to be replaced by a motion of 512.
How you know how it feels?
But I will allow myself to be misdirected for a moment. Recently, Madam Mayor, we celebrated the occupation of the 1,000th home on the southern fringe. That number has now exceeded 100, of which some 350 are social housing, provided through a partnership. There was nothing complacent, there was nothing negligent about the way the previous administration ran the council's housing stock. There was anything that was bold and ambitious about the carefully drawn up plans and vision of the southern fringe? And, if council will indulge me for a moment, my real reason why I want to mention the southern fringe is that I would like to take a moment to just thank all the officers that have been involved in delivering that programme, in the planning of arms and group development, and even other parts of the organisation. It's lived large in my last four years as a councillor, and I think trumpeting's growing pace, and that's what they've been, have been greatly used by the efforts that have been put in, and I just want to put that on record. It's almost a pity that I have to make a point about the scale of the political vision that was involved in living it, slightly transplants genuinely non-political point. We did make delivering housing for this city a priority during our time in office, and that is in reference to private construction. And when we had the freedoms mentioned by my colleague to actually invest our own money and in council, in crisis, in council stock, that's what we did with what I still like to call the bottom of our land, and learn to call it our destiny. Which is an example of everything that we would want to see in future developments. And yes, one last time, I will mention code level five, we would like to get back to code level five for council housing, social housing in the city. This is the distraction, the amendment is being proposed, from what should be a fairly simple, straightforward commitment by this council to the idea that we have to use all the resources we have to tackle the biggest problem facing this city. We've gone down the route of requiring the 40%, and on playbar, we've had to find developers to ensure that we did get the 40%. We've gone down the route of investing in our own household housing, but we know it's unlikely the debt cap will be lifted. This is a consummation party, the appointers are completely whitehall, Eric has drunk through the leg, he will listen to his civil servants on that one. We need to commit the full range of this council's resources to tackle this problem, and that means making the priority investment of our money.
Thank you, councillor Ashford.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Apologies to listeners, as you pointed out, we seem to go over the same old ground. We spent hours debating this at the last council, and I thought it was quite clear what would result from the act of that council, but as we know, it's like a dog with a bone, they won't let go. And I'm pleased to hear that Trump did all those nice new houses, but it's a pity that the Labour wards in Cherryington, in Abbey, in Eastchesterton, for old folks, were kicked out of their houses, and they couldn't even come back, because the houses you were rebuilding, they didn't qualify. So, not only did you kick people out from the communities where they've lived for 20 years, you didn't even have the courtesy to give them a chance to come back where they lived, and you tell us you care about social housing, you tell us you care about people. I wish you'd done that before. You tell us that the figures don't stack up. We can't break these figures up, councillor Avery, you have to go to these offices, that's why they pay these offices the money, you have to check the figures, you have to go through many checks to make sure they're stacked up. So, if you tell me those these figures are wrong, you better take it over to these offices who've spent hours and hours on these figures and tell us they're not right. We know what this is about tonight, this is about another leaflet to get out in time before we're upset. And I'm very glad anyone for the leaflet, you could put out. We apologise, we apologise for not using the money correctly. There was no magic wand to find this money, you've been sat on this money for years and years. Councillor Avery, we challenged this council before you elected. Every year, we asked about the reserves, why we had so much money reserved, how it couldn't be spent, and we were told by your leader opposite why it couldn't be spent. And now, for some reason, we've unlocked this money, you know exactly what to do with it. For 14 years, you had all this money, and when we challenged you to do things with it, you did nothing. In fact, even worse than nothing, you were not a penny on it. So, I'd like to record a point, don't lecture us on how to spend this money. The electorate know that, the electorate of this city know that's their interest, our best serve it us, they see that in the way we're trying to do things. And if you've got such an antique about commercial property and the fact that it's going to go down, why is it that everybody wants to come to Cambridge? Why is it highlighted as the grand city for commercial? And if commercial property is at risk, why did you, with power, get rid of commercial property and put the money into housing?
Madam Mayor, actually, the thing I remember most passionately about being leader of the council was councillor Ogoi attacking every year when we had the necessity to spend the family silver and reduce the size of the reserves. So, I think there's a certain amount of hypocrisy behind what councillor Ashford was saying, maybe this was when he was not on the council. Madam Mayor, the defensiveness of this amendment speaks volumes. I mention it slightly liberally from councillor Blackhurst, it's a modest motion of barely four lines, provoking an amendment of 46. You have clearly stated, you clearly started, sorry, to live in a world where I'm called a gambler. Free, Madam Mayor, the main motion is about you on the other side. You're in charge now, we are talking about your priorities, not the coalition, not the government, not Jimmy and Hubbard, not us. And all of that are misrepresented in your amendment, and their achievements are all omitted. This amendment that you put forward is about everyone else apart from you, and about your judgment, about everything else apart from the priorities behind your decision. But I think we really have the answer from this. This amendment is the cowardly way out for voting against the motion. You do not think you have made a mistake, you will not reconsider. You think commercial property investment is more to be sponsored by this council than housing investment, and it's a relative choice that you're making there. People waiting to find housing, people struggling with the market rents they can't really afford, take note. This people over here could have helped and had preferred this smokescreen instead of the legal.
Okay, you're right, your part.
Look, there are, I'm not going to go on and on and on and on. Oh, really, really, really. Councillor Vic, it's tough in opposition, isn't it? You know, when the numbers are stacked against you and everything you think you say is right clearly isn't, and you know you're going to lose, you talk about the cowardly way out of the motion, this is a way that the amendment was designed to demonstrate your failures, our successes. Councillor Saris mentioned one of your candidates, former councillor Tim Ward, talking about social cleansing, because we are building social houses, council houses, and we were proud to talk about the fact that we were building 100% council houses on some sites. Social cleansing is moving or forcing people to move out of their homes, demolishing them and not allowing them back, as has already been said. Slipped communities is what you did, councillor Beckstede talked of Litchfield Road, another one of these, demolish and rebuild, that you thought was such a great idea, force people out of their homes and build some new ones and some nice private ones. But we stopped that for very good reason. We don't see why you should be destroying effective communities. Councillor Avery, why didn't Labour look at the finances? I know you haven't been here long. I haven't been here that long, it just feels like it when I listen to some of the diet tribe that I present to tonight. We did, and we have, and we've made suggestions, but they were all rejected, because guess what? You had the bigger number, so you didn't have to take any notice of us, you didn't have to do anything that we suggested, you just had to put your hands up and vote in a certain way, which you'll see happening shortly. A Labour government, or the Labour government, when it's in place without allies, you know, we don't need anybody to suck up to us or to suck up to, is committed to building housing, and we will be building housing, because we are aware of the crisis, and the only way out of this crisis is to build houses. The Tories see the only way out of the crisis is to sell houses that people already live in. We see the way out of the crisis as building more homes. Councillor Blackhurst, in fairness, Madam Mayor, with an hour his farewell speech, talking about my magic wand, oh boy, if I had a magic wand, I'm not going to go anywhere. So, as I was, as I said, Madam Mayor, the destroyed communities, because we need to mention these destroyed communities, Cherryington, Labour ward, Abbey, Labour ward, Eastchesterton, Labour ward, you haven't done any destroying of any communities in yours, Madam Mayor, I'll give up. I'm not fine. I don't act when I have to talk the whole time, then I just stand it.
My name is better.
No, it's fine. Well, I say, I was kind of at a loss, really. I'm hoping that this is a watershed, that we can get over this, because we're going to have to pass it, Madam Mayor, because I'm going to keep here for a year. The year I've been here, I've been on a housing screening committee, and I have a pretty good relationship, actually, with the chairman of the housing screening, and even with the executive councillor, except, of course, when the executive councillor comes into this chamber and he goes, oh, it's difficult. But I'm hoping that three, the three that have a housing screening committee, and three reportable housing programmes, we've all made progress, and I am kicking that, and I'm really rather than looking forward to the result of this general election, because it's going to change the dynamics. Lovely way to end. If we can all sit together and smack off the joint Labour-Liberal Coalition Government. I'm just hoping that we will be able to move forward. It is true that councillor Blackhurst, to trade, that is the way for us to treat this issue now. That is the way for us to move forward on building a good programme. That is the way we behave in the committee, and I hope that the rest of the chamber can pick up on that in the future place.
Okay, thank you very much. We'll now go for the vote on the amendments. Please, can I see those in favour on the amendments? Okay, those are yes. And any objections? Okay, any debate on the motion that's been amended? Right or no? Yes, sir, Adrian. Those on the motion? All those in favour? Those are yes. Okay, it's now just going on past eight. Is everybody happy still to carry on? Or do we have to break? Carry on?
So everyone would have it.
Okay, now turn to motion 6B, sorry, to be considered by the council. I agree with note by the director of customers at community service that this motion has been emailed to you and it is a void motion pack on May 41.
I'm just going to the loo, Richard, I'm not leaving.
We'll all leave.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We've all met refugees who have fled from war, oppressed regimes, and other disasters that have caused them to return to home, like when they were talking about they had been abused. However, there are some of these refugees who have changed recently to seek asylum, just for protection, recognised from ancient Egyptian times through Greek Roman times, Hebrew times, into Europe, and the Middle East and Latin. Religious organisations and states have recognised them to temporarily protect those who are in life, either political, religious, and other reasons. This is the body in UNHCR. In the UK, someone claiming asylum is protected while their application is being processed. The current process is very rapid and based unfail on the cessation danger from the country of origin. Those countries considered homeless, or most countries, are deemed to have no chances of getting asylum, or must have their asylum claim turned down. Those countries include Zimbabwe. Many others fail to impress the officers charged with the fact that they have asylum protected, and so asylum seekers are banned. There is an appeal process of the subject of this motion. During this process, these individuals are therefore no longer afforded the protection that asylum gives under international law. These people are considered unworthy of the legal protection by seeking asylum, pending their commitment. If they want to do the detained fast track process, where asylum seekers may be detained for the duration of their appeal of application and appeal process, and ambiguous area in their international legal obligations. Our current system treats these desperate, damaged human beings within that. As a principle, UNHCR opposes the detention of people seeking asylum and calls for the use of alternatives where possible. The principles denunciated in the universal declaration of human rights are not being followed by this vulnerable people in our charge. In my book, this is inhuman, amoral, and untrustful behaviour. The story of how many of these people arrived on our shores is terrifying. I've come across it from many people who have been in conflict, and first, quite regularly during my work, supporting other medics, supporting these people who have been fired and discriminated against as they tried hard to work in these detention centres. The asylum seeker leaves family and friends, often in a very poor physical and mental state, travelling through countries where they're treated poorly, often robbed and raped, their few possessions stolen. They often destroy their travel and identity documents for fear of being identified and the country to blame. Those who have been tortured are very, very wary, but any mission is to be made at this time. It takes many months or years before they start to trust others and tell their full We have a duty of care for our people, just to treat them particularly in compassion and follow universal declarations of their own human rights. I commend this motion to you. Thank you.
Could I have a second here, please? Councillor Swett? Thank you, Madam Mayor. I think one of the problems now is that the actual case tends to recreate asylum seekers with other immigrants and look for them. But of course, asylum seekers are not, in that sense, immigrants. And just because they have been, they're attending for asylum, they're then appealing, or alternatively, they come to reach the end of that, but cannot be returned to their home of origin for some reason, they are in a sense in the sort of environment. They are not immigrants, though, as councillor was there, sometimes they enter without documents, which is some people's criteria, which is a bit of a law, but you can understand why they should do that sort of thing. We have not been particularly good at doing with these people. And we haven't been for a number of years. It was a Labour minister, the Labour Home Office minister, who said that the Home Office was not fit for purpose, in spite of that, so I'm not sure how far it has been improved. My personal thoughts would be that it would be right to transfer the judging when somebody should be given a asylum seeker status from the Home Office to the Foreign Office, because the Foreign Office would have a greater in-depth knowledge of the country's origin. And, you know, it would also separate them from, more clearly, from other forms of immigration. But anyway, that's, in a sense, is a long-term thing. I'm sure most of my members in this chamber, we believe that they should be treated decently. The as you're come, which is the specific mention of this in this motion, is not a decent way of treating people. If anybody wants to know the details, if they email me or ask me, I can send on a link, and you could, then you don't need to search, well, you can search it out and do it yourself, but if you want to talk so quickly, just let me know. Now, the City Council has very little responsibility in this deal, as the briefing paper makes it clear. Though I do remember some years ago, as we came to the House of Housing, when we were asked about providing housing for asylum seekers. But although we might have certainly determined the quest down, but once they started looking at the cost of houses in Cambridge, they decided that elsewhere would be better. Chief of the Labour Party, I can understand that. But just because we haven't got great responsibility, that doesn't necessarily mean that we stay silent and we ignore this issue. And therefore, councillor Pitt put, as you can see, a number of other possible actions that we perhaps could consider taking, and I beg you to support the motion.
Okay, councillor Holden?
At the heart of the, at the heart of putting forward a motion like this is the concern of the emotion for the people who do come to this country, some of whom don't get a proper welcome, and some in different age groups have been treated badly, and they come after the survivors of a large number of people who didn't make it as well. We're happy to support this motion, but I was listening in both the mover of the Seconders' speeches, what is the relevance to Cambridge? And clearly, there are refugees and asylum seekers that are riding Cambridge, they always have, and they were welcomed before the war and looked after, and they still are. But I think one of the issues for us on this side is, we're not the House of Commons, and Jimmy Smith, and I'll continue to call you that, you will be in the House of Lords, and you're in the position to raise and debate these issues in a way that's going to have significant influence. The two people who gave their apologies tonight, Mayor, councillor Cantwell is the candidate that lives in Huntingdon, and no doubt is going to hustings and making speeches on national issues there. Councillor Pitt could have been here, and I don't know where he is, because he could have been here to move this motion, but he's the candidate for Rochford and Wickford, so he could have gained the big speeches on issues like this. I am concerned that if we continue to bring loads of motions in this spirit, we're going to put a pressure of producing reports, which, as the officer briefing note says, are not actually going to say a lot, because there isn't an immediate pressing issue affecting Cambridge that has been identified by the movement of the Seconders. We do support the motion, and clearly, we know that the destruction that has happened, some of it, dare I venture, to risk getting into national politics because of the closeness of our government, including the current government, to American interventions, and the interventions that occurred and haven't been sustained with any sense of purpose in the area of Afghanistan and Iraq. More recently, the coalition's intervention in Libya, which, without going off message, has resulted in asylum seekers from the Libyans who were in Bassemport, seeking to make a case. So we are not the place that has decided these things. We have a set of misguided foreign policies as a government, from successive governments, that have often created it. So let's see if there are some issues, let's get some input from the Cambridge FA Community Forum. Try and lead national politics to elected officials. I'm sure in the 38 or 48 hustings, that this issue will be better addressed by the people who want to represent this city. And I think, whilst this is a motion on a subject that is valid, that we do have to take care about trying to be the House of Commons. And I did note that councillor Smart did prefer the House rather than the Chamber.
Thank you. Madam Mayor, I think the best thing that could happen to this chamber would indeed be precisely that members didn't think of themselves as being members of the House of Commons or similar oppositional party. And one of the disappointments of this evening is the fact that over 20 years, I seem to have sat through more confrontational debates than debates that unnecessarily about how best results for people of Cambridge, and I think that is extremely sad. I don't think the confrontational quality is necessarily very identifying. And I'm grateful delighted that we do at least have a final motion where, I hope, all parts of the chamber can actually agree. I completely take councillor Holden's point that this is a motion that can perhaps be better dealt with than other forums. But one of the things about Cambridge is that it is a tolerant and open city, one that spans its smaller rural areas, and where I think we have a common sense that, yes, many of our international ventures, whether by governments or whichever persuasion, have been misguided. But if, as the director of, whatever this official title is at the moment, has said in her report, yes, it will be a report where we're not going to be said as a City Council, we are going to be hugely engaged, I think, if we as a city can look at signing up to the still humans, still people, and saying, this is something that we definitely believe in. And councillor Smart was saying, there are risks, you can find out about the Asian car. Essentially, for a single person who is a fellow asylum seeker that still resides in this country, access to a piece of plastic that allows them just under 36 pounds a week, it's absolutely inhumane, the way we treat that asylum seeker. And I think we as a city have to speak up to that. And also, the final point of the motion is on the MP's for the city and possibly South House, once elected, to take this forward. So the message from this council, where it is relevant, is to say to elected members, please support this campaign. Obviously, I'm now in a chamber which is not elected, so I can't claim to be an elected member, but my colleagues have been fighting for this, and I'm very happy to take that forward. But Madam Mayor, I would like to thank all the officers and members who've supported me and the great friends of the term I've been in the council. Sorry, I realise there isn't supposed to be a spot for a lady, Chris, but councillor...
This isn't the House of Lords, is it?
Well, and...
Where's the wife?
And people tend to heckle in the House of Lords. But anyway, most of my colleagues are awake most of the time. But obviously, I am not restyling, I will not be here after the election, but I have very much appreciated my time in the council, and in particular, as I say, the work of the officers, who have been fantastic, and to many friends, of course, of the House of Commons.
Councillor Hethkin?
I dispute with the same direct approach to the motion, but, of course, I support the motion, and I support very strongly. The spirit of Julie has commended the motion to us this evening for approval. We're losing some good councillors, and I don't want to be particular with respect to the tributes that they all deserve, but I do have to say that Julie has been... a particularly brilliant councillor and a particularly worthy representative of this council, that she's going to be sorely missed. She's been a friend to our family, she's the godmother of my child, and, um, we wish her absolutely every good luck in that, in the household. She's going to bring to the Lords good sense, and youthful good sense, there's enough geriatric good sense in the Lords at the moment, but we need a bit of youthful good sense, and she's going to provide that. So Julie, I'm sure I speak for all of us when I say that you will be sorely missed, and we wish you the greatest good fortune in your new role.
Thank you. Councillor Humber, would you like to write your line? Councillor Moore?
Thank you. I'm very delighted to say, I apologize for my emotional state. I spent many years supporting the doctors who tried to become these cases, working against the system, putting up every possible to prevent them from working, doing their duty of care, their legal requirements to accompany these patients, with every effuscation and every block that you can possibly imagine. And this isn't just in England, it's in Ireland, at this, in, in the English part, and I spent a lot of time on, on supporting these people and helping to, to work, help them to work through the procedural processes that were being applied against them. So I've heard a lot of stories. Councillor, thank you very much.
Thank you. We'll now go to the vote, Colonel, please see that all those in favour. Thank you very much. Okay, now we turn to the motion, um, item six D, to be considered by the council. Can I call on councillor Humber to move the motion?
Um, well, it's a procedure motion, Madam Mayor, that councillor Price has not been, well, councillor Price made a valid and, uh, good contribution, um, whilst at the time as a head of Conservative, and, um, rather than continuing until he dies, um, like in the House of Lords, he's decided that he's made this contribution and wants to move on. So we've brought this to the council in, uh, in the spirit of, because councillor Robertson, um, would like to stay there until he dies.
I'll have a second, please. Councillor Price?
I think really nobody's going to put it quiet like that. Sorry, I apologize, you're not familiar, or suggesting your, um, imminent demise. And also, just look behind you, you know. I, I need to say, Madam Mayor, I've enjoyed the four, four years, I, I should say, three and a half years, because I just have not been able to attend any of the meeting, meetings this year, and I do think it needs somebody who's got the, the time and the inclination to do that, and I found that since, uh, being executive councillor and working, holding down the job as well, I just have, something had to give, um, and it was the Conservative Service. But I have to say, it's a, it's a worthwhile thing to do, it's, it's interesting, I find all sorts of things about what goes on in, under, and inside the real, so I'm sure that for as long as you manage to do it, you'll enjoy it.
Thank you very much. Okay, can we go straight to the vote then, please? All those in favour? Okay, um, okay, um, item seven, we've no more questions, no more questions for the seat for this dinner. So the next scheduled meeting of the council is the annual council meeting on the twentieth of November two thousand and fifteen. Before you all run off, sorry, before you all run off, these have been found, anyone lost?